It's called a meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Today's date is August 15th, is that correct? August 15th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. We're meeting in City Hall in Greenfield, Massachusetts. Dear Statement, this meeting is being recorded. Any other persons present are doing the same. You must notify the chairperson at this time.
I want.
Okay, thank you. Note that the Greenfield Recorder is here and they will be recording the meeting. The representative will be recording the meeting. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20G, no person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, to the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting. And if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. Roakall members, all members are here. I would like to do the annual reorganization after, at the end. Does that work?
Yeah.
So it's 6:30 and we're here for the appeal from Michelle and Richard Osterstarsky. And the way we left it last time was that Arch Street LLC was going to come back hopefully with a proposal for the fence. Is that the case?
We have fence proposals.
You do? You got something that you can propose to us?
Well.
Why don't you?
But also.
What? I'm sorry, what?
Yes, Andrew. We have proposals for a fence, but there's also, I think, a discussion. Regarding the last meeting. I don't know where you guys want to start with the appeal or the special permit application sort of on hold right now.
The special permit application is at 6:45. This is, this is the appeal.
Okay.
As, as far as I understood, you, you, you agreed to continue the special permit, even though you had made statements to Eric that you might want to withdraw your special permit.
Right.
You decided that you didn't. You said, fine, so.
Well, just to put it on hold for.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so that'll be at six, that'll be afterwards. Those are the things that you want to comment on the special permit or on the appeal?
Well, so, I mean, I don't really know where we stand on the appeal. Last time, I think you guys voted us in violation.
We did.
You found us in violation.
We did.
So we fundamentally disagree. And it was, there were some things that were said in the last meeting that I didn't want to say anything about because I wanted to make sure that I, you know, I had my facts straight. But I did go and find proposals for an eight-foot fence. If the board now is continuing to move in that direction, that we are in violation of our special. When we came here with our, our special permits application for the additional use, right, we had a special permit for the cultivation operation. We explained to the board that this was an additional use, which isn't going to change anything to do with the outside operation, cultivation operation or intensifying anything that we're doing. We explained that, you know, all of the sort of things that the Osterstarsky people made to us, we had reasonably tried to.
You sit here, please, so that you can be on record then.
Including the.
And state your name again for the.
John Hadden, 8 Federal Street, 15 Archels.
In Greenfield?
In Greenfield. That when the, the plant covering had been destroyed by the plow, by a snow pushing the plow into their yard, destroying the plant covering, we spoke to the plow company. When the light, that was part of our special permit application, shining in their window, we redirected it and then eventually turned it off, even though our insurance company and security plan called for it to be on. And then we got all the way to this point where, where we thought, well, reasonable accommodations for complaints, despite the fact that it was our position that we were not in violation of our special permit and Mark Snow agreed with us. The board did find that. And that was when I was asking for clarification based on subjective statement or subjective understanding or subjective reading of a statement by the engineer that we had at the initial meeting that was then paraphrased as part of the special permit. And I think I was told by, by you, Mr. Chair, that we were specifically in violation because we said we were going to have residential units that would make noise. If that's correct.
I don't know if that's what I said, but continue.
Okay. I was a little bit nonplussed because we did submit a very lengthy application. Mr. Torga at that meeting said that had not provided any sound data or anything in our initial application. In fact, we had submitted five pages of sound data, which Peter asked for specific questions of the engineer about. This was, I didn't want to say anything at the last meeting because I wanted to go back and double check. I got a transcript of the original meeting from Eric Torga. Again, I went back and I looked at our submission materials and to, to look at that. And, and ultimately, the way that we feel and the way that we've always felt is we came to this city with a very, what we thought was a very honest proposal. We said exactly what we wanted to do, exactly how we were going to do it. We were given permission to do that and that's what we did. And now essentially we're being sort of thrown under the bus because these Osterstarskis are annoyed by the sound that machines that we have make. And that's fine. I understand that they're annoyed. I'm a little bit confused that we're trying to preserve or maintain the residential, you know, character of an industrial district. I didn't make the districting map. I don't, didn't write the regulations. We've been trying to be reasonable. I proposed from the very beginning, a solution where we dampen the noise by building a fence around the thing. It was, I was told that that wasn't a good solution, that we needed more data. We needed to perform a sound study at our own expense so that whatever the solution that we came up with to their frustration would be something that is suitable to them. We're just trying to run a business. We're an industrial district. We came to the city. We said what we wanted it to do. We've done what we said we were going to do. Ultimately, it would help our business to have a manufacturing special permit, to be able to get a license. We would be able to take a bunch of stuff that we have to throw away in the trash right now because we're not allowed to do anything with it and create some sort of items that we can sell on the market. It won't do anything to the operation outside. So, long story short, we did have proposals for an eight-foot fence. When I began that, that was because you had found us in violation of special permit. I pursued both of those tracks. Pursued, okay, if we are actually in violation, then this is the remedy that the board has suggested. But you found us in violation based on a few statements. But I looked into those as well and I frankly disagreed with them. So I think a reasonable solution is the Osterstarskis get a fence and we get a permit and we go our separate ways.
Taking the negotiating with us?
No, no, that's what we came here for. We came here for a special permit.
No, you came here because there was an appeal about.
No, that was separate. That was the board trying to put the appeal on us. We came for a special permit. You guys had the appeal.
All right, let, let's, let's back up. Procedurally, there's an appeal before us.
Before the board.
That is now.
The Osterstarskis are appealing Mark Snow. I have nothing to eat.
I don't know what that means, but at the last meeting, it was pretty evident to us that you were going to get a person to build a fence and you were.
As a remedy for being in violation of our special permit.
Correct.
Which I.
Which you agreed.
Which I.
Which you agreed.
Which I agreed to look into.
No, you agreed to.
As a remedy for being in violation of a special permit, which we are not in violation of.
You've already been found to be in violation.
By this form, which will be appealed because it is done. It was an error, a flawed judgment.
Fine, okay. Well, then you have to decide how you want to proceed because we do have a special permit for you. And that's a kind of a back to square one situation.
Okay.
But you have to decide.
These are the, that's the sound data that we didn't, that wasn't part of our original.
Let's, let's put that aside. We've already found you to be in violation.
I understand.
Your remedy is to make an appeal. We're not going back. We're not going to change our mind.
Well, then there's nothing to do here.
Well, that's up to you.
No.
If you don't want to go forward with the special permit, we'll take a vote. You take a chance that, let me, that's my turn. You take a chance that we will vote to deny the special permit. That's the risk you're taking if you're just going to get up and walk out of here. You said at the end of the meeting, we were all here, that you agreed that that was a remedy that you could live with.
A remedy.
And you said you would come back.
To a special permit violation.
A special permit, there was an eight-foot fence with sound, maybe with some sound cushioning inside of it.
Based on?
No.
Sorry, what?
I'm not, I, I don't recognize you. If you want to be recognized, then raise your hand. You want to sit at the table too? Then move your chair. I don't know what you guys are up to, but I think.
We're not up to anything.
Who you are.
We came with 97 pages.
No, no, I don't, I don't, this is, we're, we're done.
Our special permit.
You bet you issued it.
So you're done with the violation part. So you're in violation.
No, no, we're not.
You're in violation, you're in viol.
We disagree.
Well, you could disagree, but you're in violation. So until you appeal it, you're in violation so the building inspector can come over and hold you accountable.
Not until the appeal settles.
Well, that may be, I don't know.
And you also found us in violation based on the fact that our.
I know why we found you in violation. You had your chance to speak at the last.
Why, why?
I was not given a chance to speak at the last.
Why?
Read the record. I'm not going to go over it again. You sat there. We painstakingly, we painstakingly walked you through the whole process. Now you're coming here sour grapesing.
No, I'm not sour grapesing. Eric said we did not produce any information about sound in our initial application, which Peter was.
Time to the.
I will.
We're not, we're not.
But I'm trying to tell you that you guys made a judgment in error right now.
If you're going to decide that you're not going to put the fence up.
I'm coming to you.
Then we're, we're, we have an opportunity now to, if you want to go forward with the special permit.
That can be a condition.
Highway to the manufacturing special.
So you're saying that we're not in violation to go through with the special permit?
No, you can go through, you can, we have to do a determination on your special permit application. You are in violation of the special.
The special permit meeting was at 6:45.
It is.
Okay.
But you raised the issue, so I'm responding to it.
What I'm saying is that you found us.
For another thing.
You found us in violation.
I'm not holding anything randomly. I'm telling you what your risks are.
At the end of the last meeting, you found us in violation of special.
First, I'm just trying to.
The first for cultivation business.
I'm just, I'm trying to.
Right.
Understand.
Based on.
You were saying that our engineer.
Reputation.
That our engineer said that we would have residential.
That we didn't provide sound data, which we provided sound data, which you talked about during the special two years ago. Because we watched the video and we reviewed it.
So, great. So are you telling, are you telling, are you telling the board, are you telling the board that you're not going to do the fence?
The fence, the eight-foot fence.
Well, what are you going to do?
Was something that you offered to us as a remedy of us being in violation. It is our opinion based on watching the transcript that we are not in violation.
Are you going to do the fence or not?
We, we don't have any conditions on our initial.
Are you going to do the fence or not?
We will consider a six-foot fence as a condition to a manufacturing special.
Yeah, but we can negotiate that way. So are you going to do the eight-foot fence or not?
No, I'm going to appeal the decision because I think it's in error.
That's fine. You have the right to do.
You have every right to.
Absolutely. But you're not, so you're not going to do the fence?
No, because we're not.
Okay.
Okay, so that, to me, it sounds like your recourse at this point is to submit an appeal to our previous decision, just like the Osterstarskis is, just like other people do this year. And, and that's.
Wait until 6:45 and we'll, then we'll do the other special.
Fantastic. But there. No, it's not. It's not at all.
They don't say it. For, for clarification purposes, in terms of process, you're, you're, so you're going to appeal our, the decision we made to deny me.
No, the decision that they're in violation.
They're saying we're in violation of our initial special permit because our, our machines make exactly as much noise as they said, except that they would. And which the law approved.
Going back when I was passing by the information at the time, there was no specific criteria for detailed information. Does that work?
No, we provided five pages of sound data about the specific machines that we were going to use, which is right here, was part of our initial submission.
And you believe that the machines are within that?
They are, yeah. We measured us.
But we did ask you if there was.
Peter, you were there the other day.
Yeah.
What, what was your opinion? We were talking a little bit about industrial, industrial zones, commercial zones, industrial ambient background noise.
I came there that day to listen to, for you this, because it was a hot day.
Yeah.
And I wanted to get.
Machines are cranky.
Machines were cranky.
Yeah.
Being in an industrial zone, that noise, I didn't have a sound level meter to determine that. But on my experience, that would have been satisfactory for an industrial area.
Satisfactory.
With what I heard.
Industrial area, yeah.
In industrial, because you, you ended, by the time I indicated, this is an industrial zoned area. I looked up information for an industrial zone. And again, without, without, without a device to measure the sound.
Sure.
A subjective evaluation, I didn't see that as a problem in an industrial area. So, so if you're going to come back, you know, if we're going to further this, I'm just trying to understand what, what is it that would have to do going forward? Certainly, certainly the, the fencing would help mitigate the loudness of the sound for the neighbors.
It's the very first thing I offer. Well, for when?
Very for sound, I came here.
A fence around the devices?
Yeah.
Okay. And I, so now.
I have a six-foot fence quote from April.
But you act as though, you act as though the board has somehow done something that's not appropriate.
We came here in 2021.
I know what you did.
I was asked, we asked, can we do this? And this board, four of the five members are the same. This board said yes. And we gave you specific information about what it was going to be. And you had all the time to look it over and ask us questions about it. And then you gave us permission to do it. And now we're doing it. And now you're finding us in violation for doing exactly what you gave us permission to do.
We didn't give permission for you to make the amount of noise that you're making.
Yes, you did. You did. You did. We gave you, we said, these are the machines that we're going to use. This is how much noise they make. And we gave you the data about it. We're an industrial district. But inside the regulations.
Yeah, Peter was just there. Yeah.
And then we came here for a special permit, which doesn't intensify our use whatsoever. It simply just allows us to get a different kind of license, which allows us to make a different kind of product without changing anything about the exterior or the interior of the building. And we've been given, we've been given nothing. But I, I've been treated, treated like I'm some sort of criminal that needs to be run on the top.
I have, we have not, you're talking to me.
Yes.
I have not treated you like a criminal.
Okay.
So you came in here and said you were going to do a sound test. You came in here.
Yes, I said the Osterstarskis want us to do a sound test and I would look.
But every meeting we waited for you, you said, you never said, no, we're not going to do this or no, you're, we're not.
I'm sort of more unreasonable?
No, I didn't say you were unreasonable, but we kept, we kept waiting for a solution. So did they.
No, you kept waiting for the Osterstarskis to approve the solutions that I.
Well, they're the ones who are impacted by it.
But at some point, the board has to make a decision.
We did. We found you in violation and now, and you said you would come back and.
Fundamentally, we've got a decision.
Well, that's fine.
After going back and listening to the transcript and listening, listening to you, this board gave us specific permission to do exactly.
I'll, I'll give you your turn. Okay, so.
I'm sorry that the Osterstarskis are upset about the noise. They live in an industrial district, next to an industrial warehouse, which is next to a set of train tracks. I don't know what else I can do. I've offered to put a fence around the thing. But at this point in time, at this point in time, we are not, in our opinion, based on all the evidence that I have in for me, despite, despite the board's decision, I, which I fundamentally disagree with, I do not believe that we are violating the noise ordinance in Greenfield or our special.
Okay. So from a practical point of view, we're probably, I would suggest in the next year, that we do, that we do put a condition on you to put that fence around the apparatus.
That's exactly what I just said.
And so what's the answer to that?
We would consider a six-foot fence as a condition to expect.
You're not, you're not, you're, I don't want you to tell us what we're going to do. We're going to tell you what we can. So that's, so that's the, that's the risk that you take.
If we conditioned it, that's what you have to do.
Unless we.
Well, I mean, no, 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 you challenged that.
Just let the permit go.
Yeah, well, no, I understand that. But I mean, if you're going to proceed with the permit and, and we condition it with that, that would be a requirement.
I mean, I don't know why you're biting your nose to spite your face on this.
I'm not biting my nose, it's by my face. You've come to us and you've asked us to do like a $15,000 sound.
You're saying if we don't put the fence.
Now you're telling us you want to put us to put an $8,000.
On the fence and we maybe can have a permit or can have a permit.
No.
I didn't say that.
And they haven't even voted on it.
No, that's not.
They haven't even discussed it.
You were saying there would be a condition?
We are. What they're saying is if they want to give us a permit, they get to tell us whatever, whatever they want to tell us.
Okay.
No, it's not what I said. I said that based on the evidence that we have, it's possible that the recommendation will be that you put a fence around it to get the second special permit.
An eight-foot fence is outside of our budget.
Okay.
It would be better for us from a business perspective to not pursue the manufacturing license than to have to incur the expense. On the other hand, though, it's our opinion that we are well within the legal boundaries.
I hear you. You said that, you've said that enough times.
Question, what is the appeals process since they just agreed for that decision?
Well, the decision would hold unless they appealed it.
And would be appealed.
It would be the same as, it would be to some court.
Yes.
All right, so you, you, so you, what I heard you last time say that you were going to come here with a proposal, I sense the proposal is, we're going to hear it during the next part of the agenda. But you have no intention of doing anything with respect to the appeal. So we'll close, we'll close that portion of the, of that, of the hearing.
For the sake of clarity, the parties to appeal are the Osterstarskis and the building department. This board has asked us to get involved in the hearing of that appeal.
Well, we grant.
And then you found, you found us in violation.
Right.
You, you cited the Osterstarskis in the last meeting and asked us to look into remedies for that violation.
Right.
In so doing, I reviewed our original permit and came of the opinion that it was a judgment in error.
That's fine. But the, but right now, right now, right now, there's a decision that you're in violation.
According to this rule.
Yeah, well, it'll be, it'll be the rule until you appeal it. So they have won their appeal at this level.
Interesting.
Yeah. I'm curious. Okay, so what, does anybody have anything else to say? Yes, Deborah.
Hold on. Um, so, thank you. So I'd just like to comment on the fence. I have other things that I'll withhold from speaking to now and wait till the 6:45. Well, it's already past 6:45. So I've looked into the fencing solution. A, a wood fence, eight feet, might help somewhat. There definitely has to be sound absorbing material. I don't think it's going to completely cure the issue. A six-foot fence is not going to do the job. Every time 15 Arch Street LLC and Mr. Hadden are faced with, we need to put an outlay of money out, their excuse is they can't do it because then their business is going to go bankrupt or whatever and some rocket fuel company can come move in or whatever crazy thing that he said at one meeting. You're a business. You need to be a trustworthy partner in the community. There's been, you know, I distinctly remember that first meeting that we had with a proposal. And I remember being told that these units were going to be residential size, residential noise. I remember that very distinctly. In one of the meetings I attended, it sounded like you were shipped accidentally the wrong type of unit than you actually proposed. And that's why they were loud. Also, those units could be tuned up or down. So I don't know when the representative from the ZBA came and visited, but it might have been at a time when they had tuned the units down so they were a little quieter. Because I have heard just prior to the last meeting that was scheduled, the units were very quiet for a period of time because they do have the ability to tune them down to a softer sound level. But then right after the meeting, they went right back up again and they were just as loud as they were previously. You know, I sent pictures to explain about sound abatement. I've called sound abatement companies and done quite a bit of research myself. And the way that this is situated, the distance where you would have to put the fence from the building so that you don't actually reflect sound and actually make it worse, the fact that their property is situated on a hill, so it's going up. If you can see the units, you're going to hear them. So even if you could maybe mitigate the sound somewhat being on the first floor, if you're up on the second floor and you can see the units, you're still going to hear them. And while it might make it better for the Osterstarskis, the way that they put the fence with me being a front of the property, it could rebound off the building and I could actually get it worse. Not to mention that putting a fence might actually cause more other issues, such as the odor and the fumes, like a chimney effect. And then we end up with another situation. And my concern is if we okay this plan for a fence and they outlay the money for it and then it doesn't solve the problem, I don't think we get to do a do-over because they've already put the money out for it. And it's, I don't believe that it's going to fix the problem. It also requires a bit of maintenance for the fence. And so far, from what they say, they are going to go bankrupt every other day. Every time they have to put out money to run their business, I don't have a lot of faith that they're going to, you know, do the appropriate actions to really make sure that it is going to deaden the noise. Heirloom in Berniston, which is a much bigger facility, also in a residential area, zoned for industrial and residential. And they have their units far enough back from the street. So you're at the street level, you don't hear them. This was an ill-conceived project. I hate to say it. They have this whole building that they could have used and ideally they should have used the upper portion of the building and put the, these units behind that and it wouldn't have bothered anybody. But they don't want to do it because that part of the building isn't structurally sound and it's unsafe. But, you know, there's other things that I'll go into but, you know, there's other things that I'll go into about some of the other issues that they haven't maintained. Uh, but I just wanted to address the sound issue that if you're going to, um, try to mitigate it, um, really, a wooden fence is not the best thing. Um, they make other materials that have rockwool insulation inside. You have to put sound absorbent material on the building, um, around the units, on the fence, and the fence has to be a certain number of feet away from these units. And I don't see that they can do that. If you look at how the driveway is situated, the fence would have to go like partway into the driveway, and then they're not going to be able to move their trucks in and out. So I'm really not sure. I don't have a lot of faith that even an eight-foot wooden fence would solve the problem, and a six-foot wooden fence is not going to help at all and might actually make things worse.
Thank you. Anybody else on the Zoom that wants to speak? Okay. Michelle, you want to say something?
Um, I have a question. Are we zone general industrial or industrial?
GI.
I think it's general industrial. I don't know. I can't say, I don't have.
It's GI.
It's a map right there.
It's general industrial.
You're being in general.
General industrial, GI.
Industrial.
Love people sitting on some of these general industrial in our industry.
I don't think we have something called industrial in our, in our city. It's usually, each of the zones has two names. The general industrial.
It's really in general.
So you get marked.
They said there's planned industry and general industry.
The neighborhood that you're in was, uh, zoned that way, I think, because there's a lot of buildings there that already existed when zoning came into effect, so they zoned them around the existing, uh, buildings.
In the zones. Yeah, in the, just, just for people's, um, was the purpose of the general industry district? Is the purpose of the general industry district is provide areas for light industry and manufacturing, which do not include on residential areas. Um, and then, you know, uses permitted, you know, greenhouses, home occupation, uh, philanthropic, philanthropic, I can say that word. You know, photocopying, data processing, newspaper printing, business professional office, office park, research and development, wholesale trading, assembling for, you know, packaging, finishing plants, warehouse, trucking, uh, construction, supply establishment, contractor yard, self-storage, caperous trade shops. So it, it seems, and, you know, to me, reading through that, that the uses that they're doing can fall into the general industry.
Well, plus the.
But I don't know.
Marijuana has a special permit.
Zone, separate permits as well.
Anything else?
The only other thing I want to say, gonna be the death course, but nothing I want to say. I want to sleep in our house. You guys get to go home and sleep in your white home day in and day out. We do not get that. You don't get that retreat. You get that retreat when we leave the town of Caryville. So I hope you can understand why, if you want to sleep eight hours a day with that hum outside your window, go right ahead and try it and see how well you sleep. There were tides, I was up at two o'clock in the morning because I couldn't sleep because of the hum. So yes, it gets frustrating. And I'm not, like, so yeah, I didn't have that horse. You try sleeping there with a window open because it's nice out. We can even open our windows in our bedroom during this nice weather that we're having. That sucks. So I hope you can understand why I am frustrated. It's not. So I hope you can understand why we are irritated, frustrated at the constant noise. Yes, I understand you are a small business. At the same time, you are in a residential neighborhood that, and that probably would be more people here, but when the letter goes out, it only goes out to the property owners. And don't the house across the street, that's 20 Arch Street? I asked them upstairs, you hear those units? They're like, yes, they have young kids, younger than ours, and they can hear it. So it's not just us in the, in Deborah, it's the other neighbors as well. But we're the ones here because we're the one that made the, putting the appeal against Mark Snow.
Anybody else? Somebody have a hair?
No, that's Deborah. I think she just didn't take her hand down.
Yep. Um, no, I, I did put it back up again. Um, yeah, I would just like to add too, um, living across the street from this, uh, it is extremely annoying. Uh, we hear the motors going all hours in the day and night. Um, doesn't matter what time of day or night it is, you hear them. It is extremely annoying. You still hear them banging on and off. Um, maybe not as bad as it was, but they still do that. And it's just the constant noise all the time. I hear it in the front yard, I hear it in the backyard. Uh, we have had to keep our windows closed. We've had to run our air conditioning, um, all summer long because you can't open the windows. Um, you'll just hear it. Um, and that's unacceptable. And, you know, I'm in a position, you know, I'll talk about, when we talk about the other things, there's some other, um, concerns that I have that have affected, um, my health and my husband's health, and we're seniors. And, um, you know, I, I planned on making this our retirement home and putting some money into it to fix it up the way, um, that we would like, now that our children are all, all moved out and, and grown up. And, um, you know, there's, there's, I, I'm hesitant to go make any major renovations to my house because it's so miserable. And then I can't even sell it because who's going to want to move in and listen to this? And I'm in a, um, a pretty bad position as well because not only do we have the marijuana cultivation, um, in my front door, in my back door, um, at the old Smith, um, paper, that part of that building. And the proposal there is that it's going to be a marijuana distribution center. So I'm going to be sandwiched in between, um, two different businesses. It's not going to make anybody want to buy my property. Um, or if I do sell it, it's going to be at, at an extreme loss, which isn't fair to me and my husband. Um, and, uh, I will go into some of the other issues and concerns when we talk about, um, the next, the next issue.
Anybody else? Just for the record, um, in the minutes, which I assume correctly transcribe what happened. Which correctly, can I speak? Which correctly transcribed what was said at the meeting. Peter inquired about the location of the exchange handlers and what's the noise level is for them. And the reason that Peter asked that, it was because we knew there was a house right, especially right next door. No offense to you, Deborah, but we knew there was a house right next door. And Gath, who was your representative, representative of Arch Street LLC responded, blah, blah, blah. Uh, the condensers are residential scale and not loud at all, which caused the board not to impose a condition. So that's, that's the position that we take, and we're standing by it. So unless anybody on the board thinks we should revisit our decision to find any violation, and we're hearing from them that at this point, they're not going to, um, do anything to mitigate it, and we've heard from everybody, let's close this, we'll close this portion and go to the special part. You know, I forgot to have it read. Peter, would you read, uh, before we close, before we close the first part? At least read into the record what we were talking about. So anybody coming in late. So, uh, the 6:30 PM, uh, was a continuation, if you could read that part.
Application of Michelle and Robert Ostarski for the property located at 15 Arch Street, Sessors Tax Map 69, Lot 74, which is located in the General Industrial District, GI, for appeal of the letter from Mark Snow, Inspector Building State, in March 7, 2024, related to the noise issues at 15 Arch Street.
So again, to repeat for those coming in late for the record, um, last meeting, we found Arch Street in violation. Arch Street represented to the board that they would come back with a, uh, a plan for fencing. At this point, they seem to have changed their mind. There is no plan for fencing. There's no plan, excuse me. There's no plan.
Stop misvoting it.
I'm telling you right now. I tried to be really friendly. If you're going to interrupt me, then I'm going to impose my chairman's power. You got, you have to decide. Don't give me the eye-grow thing. I'm going to have you, I'm going to have you thrown out of here. So you're going to stop. This is our meeting, not your meeting. You're free to talk, you're free to disagree. When I talk, you listen. When you talk, I listen, okay? You got it? Is that clear? Is that clear? Is it clear? Thank you. So, um, the impression that we had was that you were going to, that the Arch Street was going to come back. Maybe that might not have been the impression that they had, which I think I'm going to hear when I'm done, but that's fine. So at this point, there was no proposal on the table that's consistent with the two hours that we struggled last meeting trying to figure out what to do. Okay. Is there anything that you'd like to say before I close this part of the hearing? Before I close this hearing?
This is the appeal?
No, this is the other hearing. It seemed like you wanted to interrupt me and say something. Is there something you want to say?
Are we now doing a special permit?
It sounds like you have nothing to say on this part.
I don't know what you're talking.
You just interrupted me and wanted to say something. I was closing the section of the meeting that pertained to the appeal. Is there something that you want to say about the appeal? You seem like you wanted to say something. You're done.
I mean, one.
Are you done?
One final question. When I was on site with you, at that point, you had indicated a fence company had contacted you as a result of the previous meeting. And you were proposing to come before us with that. I take it that's, that's.
We still are.
Well, I, I don't think so.
We have your fence proposal.
Yeah, but you're, you're, what you're saying is you totally disagree with, you know, the need to do this.
We disagree with your process of finding.
But I'm trying to, I'm trying to determine exactly.
Original permit.
If you're disagreeing with it, you don't want to pursue it. What's the, what's the point of the conversation about a fence?
Well, so I, well.
Because you would, I, I'm just, I'm just, I was on site to listen to noise. That particular, it was a very hot day, and I wanted to hear how noisy it was for, for, for condensers running. And during that conversation, you had indicated that a fence contacted you because you hear it. And they were going to give you a proposal, and you were planning to come back to us for that. It appears that not, because you totally disagree, that's not going to be talked about.
Well, so. But let's, if I may answer the question.
Okay, please.
We feel like we've been very consistent where we don't think that we're in violation of our special permit. We came for seeking a new special. And the Oderskis had to complain about the noise. From the very beginning, I've said that we understand that they're upset about the noise. If you, we've offered, not that we think that we need to, because we don't think that we're doing anything wrong, but we offered out of the goodness of our own hearts to fix that for them, despite the fact that the new special permit that we were seeking doesn't do anything to intensify or change or alter any of the, the actual operations regarding the cultivation special.
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand.
Right. And so the board asked me to, to find some proposals. I got proposals for six-foot fence. They asked me to meet with the Oderskis. The Oderskis said, we don't know what we want, but we want you to do a sound study so that maybe we can, you know, whatever it is that we propose that we can figure out so it'll make us happy. And, and again, I'm saying, well, it's, you know, I'm trying to do this to be a reasonable neighbor, not because I think that I have to. Because we were given specific special permit from this board to do exactly what we're doing in this exact location. We have now been found in violation. The board said, now that we've found you in violation of special permit, let's talk about remedies. After going around and around, the remedy was to put a fence on it. Deborah thinks that it needs to be eight-foot, or somebody suggested that it be an eight-foot fence instead of a six-foot fence.
The building inspector suggested.
Whoever suggested it. And I said, fine, I'll, I'll look into an eight-foot fence. David said, you'll come back with a date certain and a contract and yada, yada, yada. And he said, yeah, we'll see. And that was, that's where we are.
I, I don't remember you saying we'll see, but.
Sure.
I said, I think I said, sure.
Let me just finish the question.
Okay.
We were on site, what, that day, you didn't, I, I'd suggested putting some acoustical treatment on the back, saying, you don't really need to do that. The vendor we had is going to propose a material that would be just as good as that suggestion. So is, is there any?
A wooden fence.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Knocky fence.
Yes, right. But I'm just saying, is there any technical information or is that just? I, I, I'm just trying to understand what, what, what you want, what we're going to do to resolve this. If there's nothing that's going to be offered, or nothing going to be talked about, I, I, I'm not sure where I'm going with this. If you get to the next one, and there's no fence, this, the noise issue, I know you're not going to increase the noise, but the same circumstance you have for the first appeal is going to be there for the second one. Right, I, I'm, I'm.
Right, but it's a, but it's a fresh, it's a fresh.
No, I understand, but, but the noise problem is not fresh. It's the same noise problem.
That's right. But the noise problem was a, the noise problem was something that we inquired about at the first hearing because they weren't a ongoing business. They represented to us that it would be what I read into the record. Now it's different. So going into this, this request for a special permit, we have that information, which we didn't have for the last one. So we can take that into consideration. But we're not, so.
Well, and that's where we disagree.
It's okay that we disagree.
Because we told you exactly what.
Okay, that's fine. I hear that. But, um, you heard what I said, and that's the position the board took, and we made a decision. So I'm going to close the appeal. Let's open the public hearing for the special permit request.
Can I make, as we move into the next one, I'd like to make a comment in, in, when we deal with special permit at the start of that. So I don't, I don't need to officially close this and then.
Yeah, officially.
And then read.
Everybody ready to come?
People from the appeal portion? Okay.
Yes.
So we stand our decision. Okay. Could you read the, the special permit?
The application of 15 Arch Street LLC for property located at 15 Arch Street, Sessors Tax Map 69, Lot 74, which is located in the General Industrial Zoning District for a special permit pursuant to sections 200-4.11(c)(18), 200-7.17, and 208-2.3, and 200-8.4 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow additional use of maximum, excuse me, marijuana product manufacturing to the existing use of the marijuana cultivation facility at this location.
Okay, so.
Each member sitting on the board are?
Member sitting on the board are. Uh, so would, Eric, you would not do so.
Right.
Ronnie.
Debbie jokes.
Kim Nguyen.
Peter Austin.
David. Thank you. Okay, so this has gone on for a little while, so maybe we should refresh those who are looking in and, uh, that, uh, you, under the Massachusetts law of what you're trying to become a special permit. Can you explain again to the board what it is you're doing under the special permit? Do you intend to do it with, under the special?
So under cultivation license from CCC, you're allowed to grow, process, and package cannabis. You need a separate license if you want to manufacture produce. Essentially, we have a lot of byproduct as a process, as a result of growing and trimming and packaging cannabis. There's a thing that grows on the, the plant called a trichome. It contains cannabis, the oil, which is what contains all the cannabinoids. Those things fall off of the, the flower as a process of handling and trimming. It falls into the bottom of the tray. You can sell it for $30 a gram in a store. We have to throw it away or sell it for a few cents on the gram because we don't have a license to do anything.
And the product that you're going to manufacture comes from the plants that are, that are grown in the building, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Essentially, what you do is you take these trichomes, you freeze dry them, and then you press them into heated plates, and you get basically this oil called a brussel.
Yes, Peter, is there any additional equipment that's going to be added to?
A water barrel.
In the facility or?
The facility outside.
Yeah, no, inside is, what we would have is a water barrel. It's basically, looks like one of those rolling trash barrels. We would have a few filters, right, that we would use to strain the material out of the water.
A bag.
And then we would have, um, a press, which is about this big, about the size of a, you know, I don't know, a hair dryer.
Do I have any type of chemicals used in this process?
None.
No chemicals whatsoever.
No, we don't use chemicals. We're, we're very organic and natural company.
And the location is in the center, more or less in the center of the.
We have, we have a room in the middle where we do all of our.
So you're, and it says no further construction necessary or anything.
Nothing at all.
And everything on the outside stays.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's all cultivation-related. Nothing changes.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
Um, just the, um, just, what is the, um, the sound levels of the press?
There is no sound in the press.
No sound. Do we have any documentation to back that up?
You just, you pull it down, and it squeezes, it squeezes.
Like a juicer.
The trichomes into a liquid. Right? There's absolutely no sound.
So we're probably going to have to rely on their representation.
Yes, thank you. And you, and you laugh about.
I will 100% guarantee you right now, you will not be able to hear it outside.
Okay.
There you go.
We have apparently, according to you, we've made mistakes in the past. And, you know, this is our fourth meeting, I believe, on this subject. I am well-versed. I was here for every meeting. I remember what was, no, no, please do not interrupt me. Thank you. I've been here for every meeting. I remember what was said. I remember, I, I, I've taken good notes. So I remember what, what has happened. I don't need to rehash everything. One thing I was talking about is that this is our fourth meeting. I do not want to rehash of all of the same issues that we've discussed in the previous four meetings. We need to move on, we need to be efficient, we need to be respectful of everyone's son, the people who are at home, the people who are in this room, and the people who are sitting on this board. That being said, you, we, it has been presented to us that we have not asked enough questions. This is not our first appeal. So believe me, going forward, if I'm going to have people coming back to me and telling me, you, you know, this was the information I had, this was the representation, you made a mistake because you didn't see two pages in a 97-page document that we gave you, which I don't remember seeing, then you better believe I'm going to ask you for that information, and you're going to have to provide documentation. No more, I, I, I am not willing to say, go by somebody's word anymore. We can't. That, that's my opinion. If you're going to say all of this stuff makes no noise, I would like to see all of this written.
Are you saying that, that we can't make any noise in them?
Oh, I, I, I don't, I'm not saying you can't make any noise, not at all. I asked you what the noise levels were, and you just guaranteed me it doesn't make any noise. I'm asking you to back that up.
You will not be able to hear it from outside the building.
I, I would like to see some documentation about what the noise levels are. I, I would like to see some documentation about what the noise levels are.
You want to continue to do that for that reason? Why don't we, okay, all right. So that's, that's a point, that's a, that's a point you're making, that's not.
The point is, is you're asking us to make a decision based on a verbal, verbal comment, which we did last time. Turned out afterwards that that verbal comment was incorrect, and we were told that we should have gone back and looked at the documentation and ignored what was said.
You guys have, may I, Mr. Chairman, may I ask you?
I'll recognize you in a second. Are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
So. I, I apologize if that was a little rude. I thought maybe what you said was a little bit, but it seems that you all think that, that I am, I'm trying to spin, or we have not misconstrued, in my opinion. I have been extremely straightforward. I'm not saying that what you did was wrong. I'm saying that what you've done is you've taken a paraphrase of what our engineer said. And then Eric Gath in the last meeting said that we did not submit any noise data. And those were the findings upon which you based your decision. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that you didn't ask appropriate questions. I'm not saying that, you know, but we have not tried to mislead anyone. I came here in the spirit of reasonable negotiation, saying, I understand the OSTRs is upset. Every single time they've come to me and they said that they're upset, they said to me that they were upset that our plow destroyed their, their plant covering. Let's keep it. I'm trying to, and we, we talked to the plow company because a chunk of snow destroyed their plant cover. They said that the light bothered them. We turned off the light. I've come here, they said the noise is bothering them. So we tried to address the noise issue and come up with reasonable solutions. It is not my job to solve everyone else's. We came here with specific plants to do a specific thing, and we were given specific permission to do. That's all I am trying to say. Yeah, but our job is to make sure that there's a balance between you being provided with the right to do your business and that the people in the neighborhood are.
In the general industrial, industrial district.
I understand, I know it's on you, man. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm fully aware of, of that. But we have people who are, we have at least three people, four people who are materially affected by the noise. And you, your response today doesn't seem to take that into consideration, so.
My response today is based on coming to this board for now, six months. We filed this application in January.
I don't understand why you keep pointing to us as though we are delaying it.
We have been trying to come up with a solution for six months.
We, we, the board knows what happened. We don't need to, you, you can, you can have your own opinion about it, and that's fine. I know collectively that we have bent over backwards to give you a chance to mitigate this without us having to intervene and make our own decision. It seems to me that, based on the perspective you're describing to us, that that hasn't worked. And so if it hasn't worked, then we are going to make a decision, and that's our job. So that's the way it's going to be. And you have your rights and we have our duties, and we're going to go forward with our duties. And so if, if, I don't, I don't know if there's anything else that needs to be said. We have gone around this a long time. So I'll give you two one more chance to speak to this. If there's nothing else to say, or you're going to repeat things that have been said before, I'm going to close out the public hearing part, and then we're going to go to work.
We do have two people who want to speak, if we can just speak the.
I'm sorry, I, I keep forgetting that there's a Zoom screen. Michelle, of course, I will recognize you. And yes, I'll let Stephanie speak. She hasn't spoken. Stephanie?
Stephanie DuKloos, one sixty-six Chapman Street. Thank you for letting me speak. Um, I, I want to just confirm the fact that they will not hear the noise of hash making from outside the building. It, we make hash at our house, and it is literally ice, water, filters, bucket. Dry in it, press in it. You can roll it in your hands if you wanted to. So if we're just independently speaking to the permit itself and not to the issues of the violations of the prior public hearing, then I think you should allow it. It's not really going to change much of what they're using already. It's not going to create anymore, and it's a great way to recycle project, product, and help a business who may or may not be struggling. I don't know their financials, but it, it will give them additional revenue to maybe be able to comply to, you know, getting them an eight-foot fence with a sound barrier. And, you know, it, it's really hard to deny a permit when it's very much in, in, similar to the, to what they're doing. They're just using the byproduct of, of what their current business is. So that's independent of the public hearing and the noise issues. This is just speaking to my, my feelings on their application for the, the use that they want. Second to that, the, I'm not sure of the process. If you can award a special permit when they're currently in violation, or if they're two independent issues altogether. And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Yes, Deborah?
Hi, um, so I would like to comment. First, I'd like to just comment in regards to what Stephanie said. I understand they have their own sort of homegrown facility, but you have to take into consideration what you do in your own house is a different scale than what a industrial company is capable of doing. And we also don't know in terms of the noise level that could be increased, but also the smell, the odor, the fumes. Now, they claim that this is all natural and hydroponics supposedly. I'd like to know why I see, from where I live, I've seen trucks going in and out carrying cylinders that look like they have the symbols stamped on them that are chemicals. Why are those going in and out of the facility if they're supposedly not using chemicals? And I have seen that. There's also been a lot of promises from this company from the get-go. I remember from the very first meeting that we had, there was a person living on the property illegally. They were told, they told us that, oh, don't worry, that person will be, will be removed. That person is still there. I see the green truck going in and out that is consistent with somebody living there. It's hours when there's not somebody at the, doing business. On the weekends, they put up canopies and they're having barbecues. So then clear violation of what they promised, and that person shouldn't even be living there. Also, there's the issue of the trucks. Now, they are not supposed to have anything larger than a box truck to do deliveries and pickups. And I sent the board photos. This has happened numerous times. In one of the last meetings, they said that, oh, that was an anomaly. That was happened by mistake. That will never happen again. It's happened several times since then, and I've taken pictures, not every single time, but I've taken pictures of the trucks. And these, they're not box trucks. These are like sixteen-wheelers, eighteen-wheel trucks, from XPO Company. And when I spoke to the person at XPO, they said that the only reason why they made the delivery is because the owners of the company, the manager of the company, never stated to them that they were not allowed to have large trucks deliver. When these large trucks pull into Arch Street, they create an unsafe condition. They block driveways, they block my driveway. When they're trying to turn around, they could create an accident. The last time that this happened, there was a bicyclist coming up the street that the truck almost hit. They consistently promise, make these promises, and they consistently and blatantly just go against them. So once again, they're not a trustworthy partner in the community. Everything that they're stating, if they don't want to do it, it's because it's going to affect their business. They don't care about the community. They've lied to the community. They've lied to the zoning board. They've lied to the city of Greenfield. I don't know why we're rewarding them with yet even an additional permit when they can't even operate under the existing permit under what they promised to do. And their security fence that was built is a joke. It's never used. And even when it is closed, you could easily go underneath it. It doesn't even touch the ground. So, you know, I just don't trust that to give them another permit on top of what they're already doing when they can't even run that business appropriately and according to what they promised the community and what they promised the board. They should not be rewarded with being able to expand their business. And that was the other thing that they promised the community, that they're going to be very small scale, low impact. Don't worry, this is all we're going to do is grow, cultivate marijuana plants. And now they're not doing that. Now they're going to expand into something else, which could cause, you know, more issues.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom? Okay, Michelle, last question.
I'm good.
Shut the camera off.
It is off.
Last things that you want to say? Guys can step back, please. Yeah, I'm going to close the public hearing at seven twenty-eight P M. Anybody need to take a break? Right into it. Everybody start.
Are we talking about?
Yes.
Six thirty, we hear.
We're talking about the six forty-five. The six thirty is over. That's.
Six thirty what?
Is done. So question is, will, do we or do we not want to grant the special permit? And if we do, will there be a set of conditions? And if there'll be a set of conditions, will they include fence around the, the machine? Or anything else you'd want to say?
When this was first brought before us, seemed all very reasonable, no issues. You know, as far as I was aware, things were chugging along great. They wanted to add to the business, increase their profits. That would be fantastic. Let's just, you know, it seemed perfectly reasonable to, to go ahead and allow that. When that happened, all of the other things came to light in regards to things from both Michelle and from Deborah. Stephanie, a little bit in regards to things that were going to happen and, and weren't going to happen. You know, things that, they had concerns. So we listened to them because that's what we're, we're here to do. I am struggling and I'm, and to keep my emotions out of it because I personally feel as though things were said and that we were told things were going to happen. I mean, when this first came before us, the intent was that they would have thirty days to resolve it between the two of them and that we would, and then we could then discuss the special permit. That did not occur. So we gave them additional time to work it out amongst themselves. That did not occur. Regardless of who, what, or why, they didn't do it. So now, you know, so then we have third meeting. Things got a little heated, and I was left with the impression there was going to be a discussion about, we were going to see some drawings, some fences, discussion about cost. Whether or not that, the fence had to go into place, we would at least have that information. We also discussed numerous times that, you know, doing a full-blown sound study was, and then probably an unreasonable request. I understand the ZSKs. They didn't want to have the business put out an expense and have it be a waste of their money. You know, for people who are trying to be good neighbors to the business and say, look, you know, we need some help to solve this problem. It's an issue, but we don't want to put you through an unreasonable expense that they could not seem to resolve that amongst themselves. So here we are again. And I, you know, again, we thought we'd have some information. Every meeting, we were told we would have something to look at, something to discuss, something to talk about. Not that action had to happen, but just something to present to the board. The first time I've seen anything from the business in relation to this topic in the six months that we've been doing this is the two pages from a previous document. I am not confident that we're having good back and forth here in regards to intention and follow-through. So if we were to allow the special permit, which on the surface seems very reasonable, if we were to apply any conditions, I am not confident that all of those conditions would be followed through in the intent that we meant by. Maybe, maybe it's to the letter of law, but, you know, sometimes the spirit and the intent of which we do these things. You know, when you break it down, I understand, you know, that's the way the law is written, but I, I, I am not confident on follow-through. That, that's my concern here.
Any else?
Final question.
Yes.
Does anybody know what the response would be to the point that was raised by Deborah, I believe, about, oh, no, by Stephanie, of whether, if they're having violation on their original permit, whether we can proceed with the second? Or are they totally separate?
I, I was going to raise that at the end, but I don't know. My thinking about it is that it's a factor that we can use to make a decision. I'm not sure we're prohibited from allowing the special permit if they're in violation of the first special. I don't think there's a law that says we can't, but I think it could be a reason to say no.
That's what I thought too, but I just wanted to hear if what people were thinking about that issue. I heard a lot of gyrations at the six thirty hearing. And now it's confused me. And going forward to this, I don't see any empathy on their part to deal with their neighbor. And they expect us to give them another permit. And I, I, I believed that they were going to come forward after I visited the site with some kind of detailed conversation about putting in a wall, and now that's completely off the table. So, you know, I'm listening to this, and we're still going to have the business there and the neighbors there with the same issue that they had before, with no proposal for anything to, you know, to reduce that problem. So I don't know how I can agree with this when there's absolutely no concern about coming forward in detailed presentation on how to provide some relief to the neighbor.
Yeah, there's, there's no relief under the first one. You know, we don't have residential compressors in there. We don't have a fence around the property. We're not solving anything by giving them another permit to continue the operation.
Well, we could condition the permit.
We could put a special.
Fence with sound insulation.
And I suggested that, and there was a very negative reaction to that, didn't you?
I, I hear you.
I mean, I, I personally feel that asking them to put a fence up around for something they want to do inside the building. I don't think, I don't think that you, I don't.
Well, they do because the products that they're, the, the plants that are growing, which provides the product that they're manufacturing, come from the.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
They're connected. But it feels to me that that condition was really specifically in regards to the appeal that was filed. And we've heard a bunch of other complaints from neighbors that aren't even like part of the consideration. Like, I appreciate that it's not people's experience, but it's not part of the appeal. It's not necessarily something that we need to factor in. But for me, it does exist within a context of, yes, this is general industry. And they're surrounded by residential homes within the general industry district, and that's been known from the jump as well. And so it just feels like we need to balance those two things. I'm kind of with Debbie on this. Like, I, I would have thought this would have been far more straightforward than how this has played out over the past half year. But it just feels to me, like, I don't, I'm not really comfortable imposing that one condition that's kind of connected to an appeal that there's been a finding, and these folks will decide if they want to appeal a finding on that appeal. This all just feels like it continues to be convoluted and messy and a very difficult spot for, you know, business and their neighbors. And so for us to then be like, go do more because you say it won't have more impact, like, I'm not comfortable doing that. So I won't be voting in favor of a special permit. So I'm going to ask this phone. Look, go ahead, please.
I was, I was actually sitting on board last, last meeting, and I know what I heard. And what I heard from the, from the Fifteen Yard Street was they were going to come in tonight with a proposal from a fencing company with a date that it was going to be completed by, cost, and that they were going to present that as a way of mitigating the sound issue. And now they came in tonight and denied that. I know what I heard. It's in the minutes.
Yep, eight, it's going to be eight-foot wooden, two-sided, and they were going to come back with a date because there's a large discussion about their inability. I'm sorry for interrupting. There's a large discussion about their inability to find a contractor now this year. We said, that's fine. They were, you know, that's fine. We understand that. But it might not happen as quickly as everybody would like. But if you come in with that proposal, and you, and then you have an agreement and an installation date and signed contract. I, I actually thought, I thought this would be a.
Over.
A fifteen, twenty-minute meeting.
Yeah, me too.
Yep, exactly my point. And that, that to me says this is, this is not an organization that is playing totally fairly with us, even though he protested several times that he's been upfront and honest with us.
The only other piece then is we have the right before we vote to allow them to withdraw their special permit. So that, you know, they could come back again and request it, that we might make the same decision over and over again. But because if we do find, if we say no, then they can't bring this back for two years. Even if they decide after they leave that maybe it was in their best interest to put the fence up. So are we going to, we, we don't have to legally, we can decide. Too late for them to withdraw the petition, but at times we can leave that through our own vote. And so I'm going to ask what people think about.
I, I think we should, we should vote that, yeah. Yeah, I could support her in reason.
Yeah.
I'm going to support it in the spirit of, you know, I, I think it's, you know, I think overall, it's, it would be what I would do for any business. And then I'll leave it at that. I'm not going to add any other comments.
It allows the context to change over time.
Yes.
So this is your call. Now, do you?
I'd be up for it.
Are you willing to withdraw the, your request for a special permit at this point in time? Yes. Yes? Yes. Thank you. Okay, so I say then that we do allow them to withdraw their special permit. I move that we allow the applicant Fifteen Arch Street LLC to withdraw their special permit request.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No, you can vote to. Yeah, it's unanimous. But that's what it stands. So just, so you understand, you're in violation in, in this, under, as you leave this violation of your original permit, and. and there is no, then the special permit, we, uh, we allowed you to withdraw it. So you can think about what you want to do. If you want to appeal it, I guess that's your choice. And if you, if you are willing to sit down and maybe talk about what makes good business sense, maybe there is something that could be done. And, uh, if, if so, then have another opportunity maybe to come back for a special. But it's up to you. We've done the best we can. Folks, we've done the best that we can. So we'll see what happens. I, I feel, uh, you know, feel, feel like we made the right decision about putting in a petition, but it's just. So, for the meantime, all I can say is if you feel aggrieved at this point, you might want to contact and determine. And see what other remedies are available to you. This is not your only remedy. Okay, thank you, everybody. That, we're done, but if you want to stay, that's fine, but we're done.
We need to approve minutes as well.
You know what, did we, did we get those minutes?
I don't remember seeing.
I wonder if weeks and weeks back from the first one you were.
We don't have meeting notes from last meeting.
Yeah. All right, why don't we, why don't we hold off on, on approving the minutes to the.
Yeah, hold off on that.
So, uh, we have a re, uh, so Eric thinks that it's time to, to do our, uh, our organizational meeting at this moment. So there are two positions that, uh, you need to vote on. One would be the chairperson, and then it would be the clerk. So normally what I would do is I would call for, um, nominations for clerk.
Nominate Peter, who's gonna act for clerk.
Anybody else wanna nominate anyone? Is there another nominee for clerk? I mean, I would close the nominations. I make a motion that, uh, we approve Peter as a clerk of the, uh, of the zoning board. Second.
Yeah.
And I want you to vote this too.
Aye.
We, I have to vote, yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now I need nominations for chairperson.
Make a nomination to be the chair.
So I can bet.
Any other nominations? Smart people.
I don't really keep my mouth shut.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I appreciate your confidence in me if that's, if that's what, if that's what motivated you. Uh, is there any correspondence?
I don't have any.
Okay, so I'd like to do is get a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
I'll step in the mic.
On paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? During none, it's unanimous. Can you please turn off? Thank you all for coming to the meeting.